To order. Okay, you guys good? Okay. All right, so calling the meeting to order for panel select board for Thursday, June 27th at 7:00 PM ish. On the agenda tonight is the agenda approval. Approval of minutes for 613, 624 special meeting. Warrants, mail, public comment, then the town auditors' report, which will include the junk ordinance, update on code work, gazebo park plan, discussion housing fair for Saturday, September 17th, town and road bridge standards adoption, zoning administrator job description, employee review update, revised personnel evaluations forms, Vermont public records inspection, copying, transmittal policy, park policy plans and committee, internal control policy, and request to form a committee to explore online services. Then, under old business, we'll cover, add a new line item to the fiscal year 2020 for budget, in the budget for assistant town treasurer. Treasurer regarding fiscal year 19 budget adjustments, 500 account in the amount of $1,197.86 moved to the audit fund, then the excess sheriff's bill, then discussion, selection, town office proposals, then, under new business, we don't have anything listed, and then we will be going into executive session for personnel.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an adjustment to the agenda, please. Could we please add the auditor's report under new business? And can we please make sure we do a hard stop at 8:00 PM when she comes, or wrap up whatever we're talking about, to give her the floor, so that she can give us her report and then leave to be with her family? She won't be able to get here till 8:00.
Okay. Auditor's report at 8:00.
Yep. And then just, I'm just asking to have that added back to the standing items, so that we don't forget it going forward. And then, I'd like to also add the signing of the four policies that we approved Monday night in the meeting that we held, the special meeting that we held. The personnel policy, the conflict of interest policy, the sexual harassment policy, and the harassment policy.
Okay. So you want to put that on here to assign them all?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, hang on, did we, did we approve this harassment and sexual harassment policy? I don't recall us even bringing that to a vote.
The majority that was here, that was present, voted for them and accepted them.
We had a motion and we accepted that?
Mm-hmm. Brian, Harry, and I were here, you left.
Yeah, you had to leave, Elizabeth was absent due to personal issue.
All right.
I mean, if you, we-
No, that's fine.
We need to adopt them, but I mean, if you would like to bring it back on another date if you're in disagreement with anything, that's fine, but we made a motion and we accepted it.
No, I just didn't remember that, I forgot that I had left early.
That you left early?
All right, so I think we're fine. I did remember that I didn't agree to it.
That's why we changed lanes.
Yeah, that's why we rewrote them.
So, personnel policy adoptions.
Oh, the other thing I'd like to ask is if we could please do what we did in the last meeting and try to put time limits on everything to keep us moving, to the best we can.
Yeah, we can try to move it along. Anything else? We kind of skipped a step. We should have had the motion to adopt the agenda, then the discussion-
No, no, you have to make the changes and adopt it.
Right, okay.
All right, so any other changes? Anybody want to request a hard stop for the night?
I'd like to make a request that we make a hard stop at 10:00 PM unless we have a supermajority vote.
I'm okay with that.
We don't want to make it 9:30?
No later than 10:00.
All right. I have 9:30, do I hear 9:00? All right, so you do 10:00? So 10:00 PM, hard stop.
So moved.
Okay, so, any other adjustments to the agenda?
I am not presenting the, for the assistant treasurer yet, because I have to still get in touch with-
Okay, so we'll strike that from the agenda.
You guys asked for, and I don't have the time to go in there, so.
Okay.
Move it.
Under old business, A.
Okay.
We'll table that.
Thank you, Ellen. Okay. All right, so we'll remove that.
So we'll table that for the next one.
Okay. Any other adjustments? All right, so if there's no other adjustments, I'll hear a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. All right, so now on to the minutes for 613 and 624 special meeting.
We're going to scratch 624.
So, approval of the minutes for 613. I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve minutes for 613.
A second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes for 613. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Okay. On to the warrants. Okay, so, for warrants, for payroll ending 616 in the amount of $7,991.96. Payroll ending 623 in the amount of $9,469.74. Accounts payable 51 on 621 for $24,925.18. Accounts payable 52 on 628 in the amount of $16,288. I'll hear a motion to accept the warrants as stated.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to accept the warrants as stated. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. On to mail. Mike, you're up.
Yes, sir. This is a recommendation for town health officer. You would have to fill this out and sign it since after the 13th, your default to you, sir.
What exactly is it?
Health officer. Application for employment.
The start date would be July 1st.
There may be things that you would have to look in there and fill out that are personal information I don't have, so if you want to-
I was going to say, I don't have to do this right now.
No, you don't have to do this right now.
I'll go through that later on in my time.
And I did err, although you did sign it. The town road and bridge standards are now combined with the municipal road standards. You did sign it, they're both items that were approved, but since it is a new standard, you have to vote to approve it. I have a request that you adopt the town road and bridge standards for Vermont.
All right. I'll hear a motion to approve the road and bridge standards as stated.
So moved.
All right. A second? All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the roads and bridge standards as stated. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Next to your signature is a certificate that there's no appeal or suit pending. This comes from the listers that taxes paid, that taxes paid under protest to the April 2018 grant list, and it is signed by two of the three listers, and you would sign that and the court could certify it. It certified and there's no need to lash him.
I thought we had three.
You do.
That's a different year. Do you want me to explain that paper?
That would be great, Ellen.
That paper is accepting the 2018 grant list. We had to field it back to the state that the appeal has been settled.
Okay.
Okay, so that's just so that she can get that to the state that says that our grant list is now closed for 2018, but 2019, we still have-
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceed as you're signing, sir.
Absolutely.
I was asked to read this. This is a letter commending our highway department. To the town panel select board, panel proud, thanks to panel highway department for their quick and thorough response to our request for an unscheduled tracks trash pickup on Indian Massacre Road around May 30th. On that day, we had 12 student volunteers and three teachers from Lake Champlain Waldorf School who offered to do a trash pickup. They turned out to be far more ambitious and intrepid than anticipated, so that we did not have an adequate amount of vehicles to haul the trash to the transfer station. The highway department picked up the pile the next, within a day, thereby preventing any scofflaws from taking advantage and adding more trash. We do appreciate our highway crew who are remarkably responsive to the community. We try not to burden them when we do cleanups, but we were shorthanded that day, and it's a good feeling to know they care about the community as much as we do, and that's signed by Megan Randall, panel proud.
That was nice of them.
It was very nice.
And for, if you're interested, there's a risk management class, I pass that around.
You can't end it up in the coach too bad.
This is a golf tournament by Vermont League of Cities. I don't know if any of you golf, I don't.
Cow pasture pool.
Huh?
Cow pasture pool.
No. You can't hit anybody.
I was hoping we could get a foursome together. No? No?
I don't think so.
Am I the only one that golfs? John? Ellen? No? Okay. Luke? No? Leo?
And then we have a safe date for October 17th, the grant management compliance symposium. You pass that around, and that would be all I have.
Michael, you did that in less than 10 minutes.
Regular Evelyn Wood.
All right, so, moving on to public comment. Does anybody have anything for public comment? Okay, then I do. All right, so, just to announce to everybody, it's been hanging up here for the better part of almost a month now. So there's an open house for the panel rescue squad on June 29th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. They'll be celebrating their 60th anniversary. So there'll be an open house, there's going to be door prizes, CPR demonstrations, games, a Chinese auction, bake sale, blood pressure readings, free hamburgers and hot dogs. So, if you want to learn about your local EMS agency, it's a great opportunity to go check it out, ask questions, see what's going on, have a free lunch even if that's all you're interested in. So please, go check it out.
Stop in and say thank you for the, to the folks.
Well, I guess if you want to do that too, you can say thank you as well. But really, it's going to be free burgers and hot dogs, so win-win.
That's right.
So, anyway, that's all I have on that. Any other public comment? Okay.
Good job.
All right, on to the town administrators' report.
Yes, sir. Junk ordinance, I submitted that some time ago, and I think that you expressed your personal opinion on how you wanted to manage that. The idea was to put that in in conjunction with appointing a new zoning administrator. And that's, you have it, if you've read it, you looked at it, and you make a decision, I'll do whatever you want.
Just to, one of the things I think we need to do, and we haven't been keeping up with that, is policies and procedures and ordinances like this that we're thinking about passing ought to be posted to the website and ought to be made public for public input. And I don't think we've really solicited-
For possible changes, maybe?
Yeah, so in the past, we've done that. We did it with, with the ordinance for large gatherings, we did it with a couple of others, and that should be our policy going forward.
Sir, I'm thinking, I mean, interrupt you. Do you do that before you all look at it and agree to the verbiage, or you do that before you even?
Usually, it's as soon as you have a draft, you put it out there and get public input so that you can build that into the final-
I didn't know how you prefer to judge.
Yeah, ordinances and items like that, I agree with, but personnel policies and policies related to the operations of duties of town employees is usually, I don't want to say proprietary, but usually-
I agree, I misspoke.
Okay.
It should be ordinances and things that the personnel policy is entirely up to us. I agree with that.
Stuff impacting the public.
Correct, correct.
Stuff that impacts the public. And I think we've probably got more discussion on the junk ordinance. So I think we actually have some disagreement on the board.
A policy on policies?
A policy on updating policies to the public.
No, but I made one. And I do agree that, you know, policies that involve public, like the junk ordinance or the large gathering ordinance-
The ATV ordinance.
Those should be up on the website for everybody and anybody to get to. Agreed. But how we process payroll should not.
No. Then I would say, put a draft copy of the junk ordinance up online and let's give everybody, what do you think, a couple of months or so to-
I think a month.
Form an opinion and have an open forum about it. Do you want to have a special, special meeting for it, like an open forum at like the firehouse or something, or just at the select board meeting?
I think that would be good. And then, you know, we should also consider doing live edits, so that if we agree on something, somebody's proposing, we make the edit right then and there. Because then it just delays the process when you're trying to get every person's input and then you're trying to go back into the item and remember who said what, where you need to insert it, what you need to take out. Just do it live.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that, but then it also had, when, you know, live for the camera is what you're saying, right?
Right.
Because it-
Well, no, like, like you bring it up on the computer and you make the edits that are being agreed on at the time, so that when you're done, you've taken everybody's input and consideration and it's done.
How are you going to edit it online?
Right.
Without breaking the open meeting wall, because you guys have to agree to the changes of the ordinance you're putting forth in the meeting.
No, no, it would be just changing the draft.
It would be done in the meeting.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying. Do it for the camera. That's what I meant. We do it in open meeting.
In the meeting, live. Like if I had the laptop out right now and John was saying, oh, I would, you know, I recommend this, and we all say, do we agree? Yes, put it right in.
And sign it and be done with it and move on.
I misunderstood, I thought you were going to put it on the website and then try to make that live, so as people suggested and you all agreed to it, you're going to change it on the website at the time. That's what that conversation just said.
Oh.
To be clear, I don't, if I can reiterate that, just to maybe boil it down. Is, I believe the process is the same. The only thing we're saying, because we're going to open, we're going to talk about it in open meetings, any edits we talk about are going to be in open meeting, we're going to agree to them. I think all Merlina, and you can correct me, all Merlina is proposing is that as we agree to them in open meeting, we make the edits live, and then, and we just have less work to do afterwards.
Exactly, right, for efficiency. Right, to get it done. Yes.
Get it done in one meeting rather than dragging it out for two or three.
Right, right.
I'm okay with that. You guys want to set a date now for when we're going to put that on the agenda, or have a special meeting? Do you want to piggyback it on the same special meeting? John's going to come in?
No.
No.
There's going to be people here.
That's okay.
Well, that's a good idea, though. People will be here.
I think that would be-
I would rather do it two separate nights, because I would imagine the ATV would be, is going to be a lengthy conversation and a very well fought out, lots of input. Policies tend to be boring, some people have opinions on them, some people don't.
I've already seen a lot of discussion about the junk ordinance, so I think that will be a packed house as well.
Which is fine, but I just think it needs to be two separate meetings.
I was going to say, I hope it is.
I don't want to be trying to-
You're right. So you just said, if I could reiterate, to post it on the web for a month so you can gather input.
Yeah, let people be able to see it.
Schedule in August.
So, schedule it for, you want to do a special meeting or just a regular select board meeting, like the first one in August?
A special meeting.
Yeah, but it can be an open forum.
Takes a while.
They do.
Yep, and they deserve-
All right, so what would be the off week then?
The off week? Wouldn't it be the first Thursday in August, August 1st? Is your meeting that-
18th. The 11th and 25th are normal meetings, so then the 8th and the 22nd.
August.
Oh, yeah, the off meeting would be August 1st.
Right. You want to do it for August 1st then, for the special meeting?
Sure.
All right. Does that work with, for everybody? I know it's kind of far out there.
6:00 PM works good.
Is that a Wednesday?
6:00 PM?
Or a Thursday?
It is.
It is. This time, it's a Thursday.
6:00 PM, okay. I can do that.
Okay. All right, we'll do that then. Okay. I think we beat that dead horse enough. All right. Michael?
I'm sorry, sir, what was this?
My update on code work is going to be quick. I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
That one was going to be-
The 18th.
Sorry, she was asking for the special meeting for the ATV.
July 18th.
Yes. Go ahead, Mike, sorry.
The update on code work is going to be pretty quick. I corresponded with the state fire marshal, and we meet tomorrow. He had sent me a couple emails, anyone on vacation, so we've got hashing out to do, and I'd like to report later on what that discussion yields, so this might be a little premature.
Okay. I'll just table that then.
Quick question, when you say code work, you're talking about building codes?
Building fire codes, yes. So gazebo?
Gazebo, I have before you, I believe I sent you a park policy and a facility use reservation agreement for one-time event. This had been approved by the previous board. The gazebo is up before the BRB on 17th, I think. Revised plan for that, I wondered if you would consider the park policy and the facility use agreement. The idea would be to, we had done some talking amongst ourselves regarding the recreation committee that exists now, is basically just the July organization that does school programs, and some point expanding that. To what extent, to how much, we still have to talk about, but we have parks that with, which you would consider short money, could be put into use and bring the community together for any number of things. So that was, that was the design of the project. And going forward, we'll have an outline of proposal for fiscal year 20. In the interim, these are the park policy. The gazebo, the grant failed for the gazebo. We are seeking somehow to fund that. We talked to some companies, local companies, to help fund that, and we're still working toward that, so.
Bob had, I think Bob had a question?
Just that you said that the previous board had approved that, and I don't recall that ever coming, the gazebo coming as a vote before the board. The only thing that came before the board was whether or not, if you got the grant, we would waive the permit fee. That's the only thing I remember ever voting on. And in fact, it was made clear, because I was asking pro and con questions about the gazebo, it was made clear to me at the time by the head of the planning commission that the select board has no say in it, we're just here to ask about the permit, about the permit fee.
Well, since I don't remember, if you countered that.
Well, it should be on camera, so we can go look at it.
Be that, be that as it may. My impression was that it was, that it was approved, and I, I said that, so with that in mind, the-
When you say approved, I mean, you're not talking about the policy?
No, that's why I have the policy here on my hand, but the idea of getting, I did not remember that as being predicated on just getting the grant. I thought it was approved to have the gazebo. If that's not the case, then it would be up to you to approve us proceeding with trying to construct a gazebo for the purpose of having entertainment, music, being able to have fairs, farmers' markets and things at the, at our parks. And that was the whole idea behind it.
So, as I recall on the discussion, just to clear it up, we, there were several select board members that had some, some concerns about the entire plan, because we didn't know where the town hall was going to be at that point. And so that came up in discussion, and so, just to be clear, and for those people that are going to write opinions about me, it wasn't just me that had some issues with it. There was many other select board that had, had issues with it.
Actually, regardless of where the town hall goes, the park could be useful. So the town park is certainly not going to take the bulk of that, and wherever you place it.
And that's an argument for it, but that's not, that wasn't the discussion at the time, right?
I'm trying to go by your, I don't remember, so I have to default to what you're saying, which would lead me to having that discussion with you, again, trying to build community, try to get people together. We've seen on Route 7 on the weekends, people alongside the road selling things. Why don't we do that in the park? Why don't we set up and do what the normal fees are for setting up and allowing commerce to go on in our, in our, in our community?
John, you have something? Oh, who had their hand up first?
Both of us at the same time, I'll let you go first, John.
Oh, please state your name.
John Masche. I'm just going to make a comment to it, as I would, I don't know how it's going to go again, that meeting's on. We've been having many meetings on that project and stuff. I wouldn't, that's kind of like, to me, putting cart before a horse, doing, you know, doing that and approving something that we don't even know what's going to be approved yet on the DFP, so there's been a lot of discussion, there's still a lot of discussion to go, so we don't know how that's going to be in that meeting yet.
Ellen?
The other thing is, we can't, we can't make money. We're not allowed to charge. I think we need to look into that. You can't charge for usage of things. You can't, you can't make money. So if the town purchased something in a tax sale, we can only sell it for what we purchased it for, we're not allowed to make money.
Right.
The other thing is, if it's going to end up at a cost for the town and it's a large sum of money, I don't know how much the plan is, I haven't read the plan, I haven't had it, I think nobody showed me the plan. But if it ends up down the road that we can't get somebody to fund it and the town has to fund it, I think it has to go to a vote, to the voter also.
If I may, sir, the town isn't in it to make money, the town is in it to make, the spaces available, towns all over Vermont have fairs, tag sales and things of that nature whereby they get a permit fee. We have permit fees for all types of things, and that's not illegal. We're not selling anything to make money. This is to have the facilities to be available.
Yeah, and to Ellen's point, you failed to say permit fee, you said to charge people.
Well, I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon.
I think that's where Ellen was coming from.
I beg your pardon, and it's no more on my part.
I think it was stated in here, but it's the fees, it's the, yeah.
And as far as cart, horse goes, there's no reason why you couldn't possibly approve a park policy if we don't get a gazebo.
We still have a park.
We still have a park.
Right. Go ahead. Sorry, Harry was up first.
I was at that meeting, and I do remember the board was waiting on the final grant outcome, so as far as-
And I'll defer to that.
What Bob was saying, because I was sitting where Mike was sitting at the time, so.
And just to, and talk about putting the cart before the horse, I think the, a discussion about whether or not he should proceed, whether or not you should proceed with this, turned into a discussion about the policy. And I, we will discuss, if this comes before the board and we decide to pursue it, we'll have that discussion, but if I recall, the fees, they were, they were substantial. It was not some-
They've just been modified since I've gotten feedback.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought we'd given ample feedback regarding that. It was altered.
You've, you've, the previous board, my job description, everything says to try You've, the previous board, my job description, everything says to try to develop the community, develop economic development, and I'm trying to do so. If that's not what you want to do, I'd be happy to do whatever change that you would like to do and adopt.
Should we put the park policy on the next meeting agenda for us to review it?
I think so.
I would be okay with that. And just on...
I did send it to you all, right? You got it?
Yep, yes, yep.
From that, and just maybe we have a disagreement there. I believe the board ought to be setting...
That's fine with me, Bob.
I believe the board ought to be setting the agenda and then having Michael pursue the agenda. So that's, that's in response to your, we hired you to stimulate our economy. Well, then you come down very much on a side of, you know, now where do you stand politically? You got differing opinions about...
I don't have a political aspiration anywhere.
Hang on.
And I don't have a political goal anywhere.
That's not, we all have political opinions. I have them. I wouldn't begrudge anyone their political opinion. And you can have them.
Yeah, yeah, we are wandering off track, Bob. I'm sorry. So why don't we put on the next meeting agenda for our scheduled meeting to everybody, that gives everybody two weeks if you haven't reviewed the policy yet as it's written. And we'll put it up for a vote at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Motion to table till next meeting.
I don't know if we have to motion for that. He's still in his report.
Right.
Just the, one thing is, this does impact the public. And one of my concerns with it is, is it actually competes. Whether or not we end up, whether or not we end up pursuing the policy or not, and whether or not we end up making a profit or not, we are now offering a service, the town would be offering a service that the private sector does offer. And there's multiple members of the private sector that offers this. So we'll be competing with the private sector. While it might have a positive economic, it also has a negative.
Discuss that notion. I'm not in competition with anybody. I've talked to the gentleman.
We're going to put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
That's going to be a difference of opinion.
We're going to have it on the agenda for the next meeting. We'll discuss it then. We'll have the discussion period then, and then we'll see where the votes fall and whether it passes or fails. And we'll see where that goes.
The only reason I brought it up is because since it does impact the public, would this be a policy that would be appropriate to put on our website to get public input? That's why, that's why.
We could put a draft, I would be fine with putting a draft copy up because it would be a public, it would be a public meeting. And there'll be a comment period, so people can comment to it. I'm fine with that.
I don't see any difference between that and what we have to do to rent, to reserve the gazebos or the, what do they call them, the pavilions in Bennington. There's no difference to me.
So, so have that put up on the website as a draft copy for review to the public, and we'll have it worn for the next, next meeting. And we'll decide that.
Next item, we have scheduled for Saturday, September 17th, but we don't have a venue. You met the folks from the Shire. There's a couple other groups that are coming. You only want to hold a housing fair. The idea being that you get folks in one, one place, to give them all the options they have available, getting affordable housing, economical, energy-efficient homes for low cost. So we're looking for a place to hold that. And I want to make sure that I get that word out, that that's September 17th, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And again, giving our citizens options for clean, affordable, energy-efficient homes of their own, so.
Who have you reached out to so far?
Reached out to who?
Have you reached out to anybody in the town to utilize space?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And have you gotten any response back?
How many people would you anticipate showing up to this event?
I don't know. We did market the Economic Forum quite a bit, and that had a very good group, not a very large group, but a bunch of people that were really concerned and wanted to do...
Fifteen?
Yeah, I would think somewhere around there. I want to learn from past marketing.
So if somebody from the general public contacted you and offered a space for you to hold this, would you be opposed to that?
Not at all.
All right. So anybody that's watching this or watches this on YouTube, if you have a space available that we could hold our housing fair for, say, 15 people or so, feel free to reach out to the town, contact any, any member of the board, Michael, Linda, any of us. And feel free to make a space available to us. Thank you.
Town bridge standards.
We already took care of that.
We already took care of that, okay. I thought I did.
Zoning administrator job description?
I did a little looking on zoning administrator job descriptions and gave you some information. Getting a new zoning administrator, planning commission had asked me as well to go through some of that. And it's up to you. We, I found that on whole, we don't pay enough. And you can select whatever you want to pay. You can look at the information that I gave you as to how much you want to pay, but it's not in next year's budget. So this would be something that for fiscal year 21, going downrange to set those policies. But the job description, and I, I gave you one, and I also supplied you with roughly, I don't know how many different job descriptions I've found around the state. If you care to look at the other examples and perhaps add, subtract the one that I gave you, that's perfectly fine.
Did you give us hard copies or just email copies?
I don't have one, but I have one in my email.
Yeah, well, that's why I was asking. I thought you had provided us a hard copy.
I have hard copies. People ever print? I do, but I didn't print that one.
So you can discuss it, you can look at it.
I'll make copies and send you all home with one later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, teacher.
Welcome. I'll drink your milk.
All right, so.
Last meeting, I gave you updated revised personal evaluation forms. If you, again, modify them, tell me what you'd like me to do.
Does anybody have any further direction for Michael on changing any of the employee reviews?
I don't think we're changing the employee reviews. I think what his, I think what he was requesting was that we review the evaluation form.
Right.
And make recommendations to it. And you had indicated that this was the form that the VLCT had provided you that was kind of like their best guidelines.
And modified it some.
Right. I didn't have anything, anything particular with the exception that on the back, or maybe I'm looking at a different form. The last page had a date on it. Never mind. I think I was looking at a different one. It says 2019, 2020. Okay.
Goal setting for 2019, 2020?
Yeah, I had two copies. One said goal setting for 2018. I wanted to make sure that got taken out. Now, it's my understanding that these haven't been consistently done with town staff?
The, since I've been here, I've done one set of evaluations, and I get them on the forms that I created and had printed by the board.
And then you're going to make sure that you, you do these at least annually?
Absolutely. That's why I'm doing it.
No, I didn't have any...
I'm okay with those groups.
I didn't have any recommendations.
I didn't see anything wrong with these forms. The one thing I did notice, it's neither a pro nor a con. I think I do agree with the form. But there is a sliding scale at the end, and I forgot what it was. It's one, two, one, two, three, four, five, or maybe it's one, two, three, four, where the higher number is better. But each individual item is either you meet the standard or you don't.
Right.
There's good arguments for and against. It seemed like a good form, but I did want to ask that one question about, yeah, right. So you have one through five, or five is conceptional, one is unacceptable. That's your overall rating. But on each individual item, it's either improvement required or meets the standard. And so at first I thought I didn't like this until I saw this.
So maybe add a four, so maybe add all, all scales to each reviewable segment?
Would we get better information on each one of the little items? If it was three, unacceptable, needs improvement, or meets standard, or something along those lines?
Well, I think when you get, when you go for the average, people are either meeting. I mean, the other thing that other employers have done is, you either meet the standard or you don't. Or you meet the standard and you exceed it. And if you're exceeding, you need to have some supportive documentation as to how you're exceeding.
Right. But, but this allows for two. It's improvement required or meets the standard. Are we comfortable with those two being the options for each individual line item? I could be.
General comments.
That's true. That's true. That's a good point.
I mean, that's, I think it's covered.
You think it's all covered, yeah?
Yep.
Would I premature in asking for motion for approval?
I would say it's premature because it sounds like there's some more discussion to be had.
I'm fine with it.
No? Okay.
I believe we're...
I was going to say, it sounded like we were leaning more toward adding a third column between improvement and meets and...
Oh, we started down that path, but there's actually a comment section at the end that says general comments, and you can actually write in exceptional or whatever.
Right, exceeds or exceptional.
All right. Well, then I'm, I'm okay with accepting this if the rest of the board wants to vote on it.
I make a motion that we accept the evaluation form as stated. I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion to accept the evaluation form as stated. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. You have your new evaluation form.
Thank you. The next item I gave to you folks was the Vermont Public Record Inspection Copying Transmittal Policy for your review, possible changes and/or adoption. This was something that I developed because we had had in the past quite a bit of people coming in and asking for, under freedom of information. And I wanted to shore that up so that we're i's dotted, t's crossed, acting upon the law.
Right. Which one was it again, Michael?
Vermont Record Inspection Copying Transmission.
Right.
Anybody, anybody, Bob, go. Sorry. I just had a quick question. Well, we talked about that in the previous board also, I think. And at that point, it was verbatim, or nearly verbatim, except for inserting column and that kind of stuff, from the VLCT standard. I just want to make sure that the current one is still the same, right?
It is.
No, I was going to ask the same thing.
It was very much from Vermont League of Cities and Towns. In fact, the supporting documentation, in fact, the record-keeping is Vermont League of Cities and Towns.
But the last time we talked about it, we did also, I'm sorry, am I interrupting now?
No, no, you had already started.
You had a different question?
Yeah, I actually have a different question. To Bob's point, I was going to ask the same thing about whether or not it matched the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, but there was also an email that we just got from Julie regarding a change in the copying fees that the state is sending down.
Oh, yeah, I forward that to everybody.
So I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next one because we're going to have to take those fees into account and change it.
Okay.
So instead of wasting your breath right now.
Good point.
Well, and the fees were not in the VLCT's policy.
I looked at highs and lows, and I defaulted to our citizens and did not make them honor us.
I knew I read that.
And that's because the state just passed that law. So...
Right.
Because for recording, copying.
Well, I have to read, I have to read what the law was. She sent us the law, but it has to go into the policy because the policy covers that as well. Yep. And it's not in there, so we've got to make sure it gets in there.
We have already talked about the park policy. Internal control policy, I wrote and submitted as you requested and gave a copy to the treasurer for your review, whatever you choose to do.
Did you look over it yet, Alan?
I started looking it over, but it's also the end of my fiscal year. And the office has been very busy, and I have not had a chance to completely reread that.
Move it to the next week? Would that be enough time for you to review maybe?
So I have no problem. From the looks of the internal control policy that was presented to me, it mostly had to do with the treasurer's job, jobs, most of my stuff. So I don't know if, so, so I, yes, I will definitely, I will definitely, I'll email all you guys and I'll let my, from what I read, it seemed pretty clear cut. I didn't have any questions, but I want, I would love to reread it again. I didn't know it was going to be on tonight's thing, so I apologize.
No, that's all right. I'm just asking, would you be comfortable with us putting it on the next agenda?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll have it read for, and let you guys know that all is though I have no changes that I think need to happen or whatever. I'll let Michael know. So all of you know. That way you can adopt it or not adopt it. But from what I read and had time to actually study, I didn't see an issue with it.
Is the board okay with moving that to the next agenda? So please put that on the next agenda.
Next, I'm sorry, sir.
Go ahead, Mike.
Our services in town, everything from citizens being able to look at their tax, taxes, up and down. I wanted to get a few people together to discuss, what could we do in electronic format that would make our, our services more efficient? And wondered if, I just wanted to let you know, ask you permission sort of to put some heads together and take a look at what we, what we have, talk to our webmaster, and see if we can come up with something that hopefully streamlined some of the processes. We...
He was first. Finish your thought, but Bob had his.
We would certainly got a clear message that we, but have nothing to do with financial. So that being said, we'd more likely be services in terms of looking up tax information, being able to fill out forms online, that type of thing. So see what's available, what's optional.
I just, always very cautious about forming new committees. We formed an awful lot of them in the last year, and we still have more on the table. And it's, so I'm, I'm always cautious about it. If we, I would say that if we go this route, I would want to see some very clear guidelines and limits to it. Like, the committee isn't to come up with new services. It's to how do we deliver the services today in a more friendly way? And have a clear start and end. So this is your, this is their task, and when do we disband this? We don't want to keep creating committees that are just perpetual committees.
Give them like 60 or 90 days, something like that?
Yeah, or whatever's appropriate.
You've touched on what has become my personal policy regarding technology, that technology for technology's sake isn't the way to go. Technology for the sake, making something more streamlined or better is something you want to look into.
Thank you.
Hold on. Let, she, before we get too far.
I want to agree with Michael. I've had numerous phone calls from community members talking about why can't they access certain things online? They have relatives that live in Bennington, and they're like, my relatives can go and look at their, their, you know, homeowners, not homeowner, but their, their house information online. They can apply for copies to get copies of their marriage certificates and stuff online. Why do we not offer that? So I do agree that we should limit that. We should look at the efficiencies behind it. We should look at how we can better service the community because we're not open all the time. And most people work the hours that we are open, so it does make it difficult. And I think it would just increase the level of customer service. Of course, we still need to be able to provide the service in-house for people who don't want to pay a processing fee online. But that's a personal choice that everybody should have the right to make. If it's going to cost 50 cents to process a request to fill out a form, then they should be allowed to do that. Or if it's going to not cost us any more money to have everything online and we end up saving on, you know, on a, a different way that we're housing the information, then that's just being more efficient.
Alan?
I agree with being able to access records and some things as such online. The monetary part is a touchy subject, and I had, it's on my list, to go with Jen, to do the whole pay your taxes online with a cutoff time and that's it. But like permits, marriage licenses, you're talking to different people's accounts. Our clerk has her own account and had already spoken on some of that stuff. So that's not just town stuff. And then the town side of it for like the building permits and stuff, filling them out online, I, I thought they were online.
Yeah, they are.
Aren't they online? And they can print them out and fill them out, but you still have to be able to pay. And paying online isn't an option.
I believe that...
Opening up that at this point is not.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
And just to be clear, my opinion, I agree with everything you said. My concern was only around the expansion of the role of that committee. I don't want to start looking at, at what new services can we provide? How can we expand what we do? I think there's a strong argument that we should be limiting what we do and save taxpayers money.
Yes.
But being able to access online is definitely a good thing to do. The more we can take advantage of that technology.
Would you like me to do that myself? I'd be happy to do that. It would take a little bit longer.
No, that's fine. I just, I'm not, I'm saying if we put the committee together, it needs to have clear objectives and clear parameters and limits. And it should be limited to the kind of things that Marlena was just talking about and not, not expand it to what else can we do? You know, I, that's, that's the kind of thing I'm wary of.
Hi, Crystal. I think we're pretty much all in agreement on that, that we don't want an open-ended committee. This is focused for a set period of time, so.
Yep. And I highly recommend reaching out to Bennington because they have, I don't know if it's a state program, but they've got a program that all property information is online, and it's very well done. And that might at least be, you know, where you can start. Good job, Michael.
That's it for me. I'm...
All right. So just to be clear, we're giving Michael permission to try to form a committee then?
Mm-hmm. And I would say like six months. Shouldn't, shouldn't take more than six months tops to...
I'd say as a rough guideline, that's true. And I would also say that it should be a pretty small committee. It shouldn't take too many people to do this.
Three people, I don't want to form that.
And they should be unpaid.
Okay, all right. Moving on to old business. Let's see.
Mr. Sheriff, wasn't there were a plus by Mrs. Ellen for?
For eight o'clock.
I think we can get through these, these three things.
I beg your pardon. I thought it was a...
You guys are doing awesome with time.
I'm not discussing in open public. I would discuss it last night, and I may not discuss it.
The budget adjustment?
No, that one I can take care of right now. I'll go for that because it's not a budget adjustment.
Okay. Because that was the next item on the list.
Yeah. Well, it's not a budget adjustment. So the, in the 500 account, there's $1,197.86 from the previous town clerk when the boards from a few years ago had voted to put money in there to cover any expenses that were occurred, approved, to do with anything that had to do with wrapping up everything out front. This is leftover money that was from recording fees that, because our assistant clerk at that time was getting paid by the hour, so she wasn't getting the recording fees. And the recording fees were going to, into an account to cover any cost. We had to... We had to do an extra audit to the town clerk, the town clerk books, et cetera, and it cost us a lot of extra money this past year between FY, I want to make sure I'm in the right year, '17 and '18. So, my suggestion was to take this money because we have to, this account needs to be, it's not a budget. It's money that was put in there specifically for the purpose to cover any over expenditures that, or any expenditures that had to do with the previous town clerk. And one of them was having to do a special audit. And I want, I would prefer that this money went back into the audit fund as we don't have the money in there because we had to spend it, so we will be short for our audit this year. So, that's why I'm requesting this happens. I would do this tomorrow if you guys say that it's okay to take this money. Otherwise, this money needs to be dispersed to the previous clerk. If you're not going to use it to cover the cost of something, then it's her money.
I just have a couple of questions. Was the money accumulated while she was still working?
Yes. The money was accumulated while she was unable to work. She was injured, she got ill and she was injured and she was unable to work, so...
She wasn't present on the job at the time.
Pardon?
Saying she wasn't present on the job at the time.
She was not present on the job, but she was still our official town clerk for the whole time that our assistant clerk at that time was our...
Was doing that.
Right. And she was being paid by the hour.
And...
The recording feeser belonged to the previous town clerk.
Correct. Her statute.
Right.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
They were voted to be held for previous things that I can't discuss right now. If you would like to discuss them later, we can.
But this money was set aside by the board.
Right. It was set aside by the board, voted, and then, so what we're doing is wrapping up that. And so, I'm requesting it be put back in because I think we paid $2,300 or something for the town clerk audit portion.
Okay.
Above and beyond the, above and beyond our regular audit that we had to pay for.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for explaining.
That's why I'm requesting that.
Okay.
That would cover, help cover the fees of the extra part of the audit that we did.
Okay. So, you just need us to make a motion and...
I just need approval to move it from that bank account into the audit fund if you don't have a problem with that because that's covering the cost.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we allow Ellen to make the adjustment she needs to cover the extra expense for the town clerk audit.
So, we go right into the audit.
And move it into the audit fund.
Yes.
All right. We have a motion to move the, excuse me, for a budget adjustment from the 500 account in the amount stated to the audit fund. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. All opposed? Okay. Give your permission.
Thank you.
All right. So, excess sheriff's bill.
I think that was me that wanted it on. One, I'd like everybody in the community to just hear me. The surcharge that was mentioned at the last meeting that nobody could hear me talk about was a surcharge if the gas goes over $4 a gallon. So, just clear that up. And that's for the new contract. In addition to the new contract, I'd like an amendment made that requests the sheriff provides the board with a breakdown of the monthly bill instead of leaving it maybe up to you to break out, Michael, or maybe not.
He typically does.
Right. But there was a comment made that if they don't, you will.
Which I do.
And they should be doing it. And so, I feel that as a town, we're paying them, they should be providing us with an itemized bill every month so that we can see where the money is being spent or where the charges are coming from.
To, what I want to make sure, he gives me the report and each page is itemized with each officer does. All I do is take it and go arrest, 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 and I start, you know, making a little hash mark.
That's fine.
And I kind of do, tell you.
I just want to make sure that they're providing us that breakdown. Okay?
Sounds like they provided breakdown by officer.
Correct.
Correct.
Not just by incident.
Yeah.
Hours, patrol.
It's patrol, hours, locations they patrol, and everything they affected.
Right. So, if they can take that and give us one sheet attached to it that gives us that breakdown, that'd be great.
I speak as sheriff.
Thanks.
All right. So, on to discussion selection of town office proposals. So, as we discussed last week, I would like, if everybody's ready, and I hope they are, to select one of the proposals tonight. Oh, actually, no, we're at eight o'clock. Hard stop for, sorry.
No, we still have three minutes.
Are we going to do this in three minutes?
No, we're not going to do it in three minutes.
I think Brian's correct.
Okay. So, let's come back to that.
Yeah. All right. So, all right. So, we're going to jump to, Crystal.
Yes.
The auditors report.
Ms. Ellen.
Oh. I'm Crystal Gardner, one of your town auditors. We, it's very difficult. We only have two auditors, not three years past. We've kind of only been sliding through with one. Just want to let you know that David, the other town auditor, has been working with the town clerk. Books are all up to date. They're all reconciled. They're in good standings. Staff's been pretty good about trying to help me understand the program, teaching me how to run reports, trying to understand the reports so I can explain them when there's Got through our bumps of miscommunication and misunderstanding, but we're getting there. I would like to invite you, some of you are aware that starting July 1, the town clerk will now have a $4 additional fee. And that is for a fund for new findings, Ellen? Yes? Findings, excuse me, this $4 fund.
The $4 extra fee.
Yeah, it's for more.
The $4 is to refurbish, I think, the town records and be able to do them electronically or...
Okay. We, Ellen has asked for the board's approval to have a line item that says town clerk fund so that it's approved, so she can do that. So, the town clerk will continue to collect the way she's been doing. Then she will turn in the fee, which will then go into this fund.
Into that line item.
That line item.
Okay.
Right.
My only, right. And my only question on that one was, and I think we discussed it this morning, was does the state, because the state is the one that is setting this supersede, because usually when we set up a fund, it goes to the voters. We can't just set up a fund without voter approval. So, I wanted to make sure that whatever we do is the correct...
Okay.
We need to put it in because a fund will roll over. So, if our clerk doesn't use all the money that she makes, collecting the $4 extra for the, for the recording fees and she doesn't, and I think it covers some other stuff too. But if she doesn't use it all in the year that she collects it, then, then it will, it needs to roll over and that's why they say a fund, I think. But I just wanted to make sure that what they state, and I have discussed it with others in here, I want to make sure what they're saying is something because we are, we've always voted for a fund. It's always gone to the voters to start a fund.
Versus having...
But we're not starting a fund with town.
Right.
We're not starting a fund with her money.
Right.
With the money collected.
I believe the law that they passed clearly identifies that it's the law and that it's not a choice. So, to your question about does it supersede, it supersedes. The voters don't have a say. The law states it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
But I do know that there are some towns that aren't doing it, so I don't know why they're not doing it. And I'm not going to say who, but I'm just telling you. So, I just wanted to make sure that it's a definite law and if it passed, I'm all good with, it needs to, I need to have some place to put that money.
Are we going to be compliant with the law if we don't do it? No. So, we should do it to be compliant.
I would almost wonder if the towns that aren't doing it have something in their original charter which supersedes state law.
I'd say some of them have already been doing it in years past.
Or they've done it or they already have money in their budget to do what this is requesting to cover.
Right.
So, I just, I have no problem doing it. I just wanted to make sure that we're doing it properly because when push comes to shove and we get audited and I get questioned on it and it's incorrect, that's why we came to the board because then I can pull the minutes and said that it was approved here. And here's the law.
Because it's not connected.
And here's the law. No, approved here for the line item.
Right.
Right. So...
And that's it.
Did you read it?
That's all.
We need a motion, yeah, I read it on the email. Just trying to think of the proper verbiage, so.
Well, I don't think we need to, we don't need to make a motion at this moment.
Okay. Well...
I'd like to, I know, but I'd like to finish hearing Crystal's report first.
Some other concerns that have come up. We've talked about, some of the staff and I have talked about why we do things. For example, we do budget adjustments. Depending on the report you run in the voted budget and then we've made budget adjustments because we've made changes with raises or something came up, it was voted, yes, we did it. Sometimes we're looking at the wrong report when we're looking at the book versus a report. So, sometimes we just have to be careful of which report we're looking at when we're comparing to our books. Some towns that I've talked to, majority of them say they don't do budget adjustments so that they can keep their lines true to their taxpayers. They don't say it's, you can do it, that's your choice. So, that's something you guys, we had talked about, whether you keep them true or you move money from your undesignedated funds. So, that's something that, you know, I looked at several other town reports. Anyone I've seen doesn't do them, but it doesn't say that you don't have to. You can do them. It is, and like I've talked to most everybody, it says the town has always done it. So, that's something we can continue to do or not to do. Some towns have a contingency fund, some towns don't. So, that's something that we vote in, kind of a cushion in case there are things we have missed, oversight. We all are human, we all miss things. Concerns regarding our workman's comp insurance policies when we have a claim, right now it seems to be that there is no policy if an employee gets hurt, if they're on town benefits, if they're responsible or if the town is responsible.
For...
For health insurance per se.
Covering their portion of the health insurance.
Covering their portion of the health insurance if they're hurt on the job.
We don't have anything on our, in our policy stating one way or the other.
There's nothing in our policies.
What about the ones that are up on the show?
But isn't there a state policy on that?
There's a state policy that says...
That states the individual is responsible.
It says the town should pay potentially the first two to three months because they were hurt on the job and then make an agreement of if they're going to be out longer than that, the town will continue to pay it. But when they come back, we will work out a budgeted adjustment in how much is taken out of their pay each week versus them trying to not be working and trying to pay it. So, that's a policy someone needs to work on.
I have to look at the policy I wrote. I'm kind of confused. I'd like to see what you can look through that.
Okay. Just because I'm not sure...
We have a transition to work program.
Right. So, I mean, right now...
I think it's a, I think it's a specific workers' comp policy on how you process, not how you process the claim, but how you process, I don't even want to say payroll because that's the wrong word to use, how you process any payroll benefits that the employee was receiving prior to being injured on the job and whether or not you continue to process something, taking it out of sick leave, vacation time, earn time, whatever, or not depending on what the policy says. So, if someone is truly injured on the job to no fault of their own, some companies will cover for three months, usually like the same length of time for family medical leave, the employee's portion of their health benefit, the retire benefit, and so on. After that, to Crystal's point, they'll work out either the employee can cut a check every month or you make an arrangement so that when you come back to work, so much is stipend from your paycheck to cover...
Instead of normally you'd have $20, you start having $30 taken out.
Right. But we don't have anything that talks about that right now. So, if you get hurt tonight, how are you going to pay for your health benefit to continue your health benefit going forward? So, we need to make sure that we have something to protect employees. So, you and Crystal can look at that together.
Any questions or we get on that one?
Many questions. We'll talk later.
Okay. Time cards, as you all know, and you look at them in your warrants, there's inconsistency. We have one department who punches the time clock. There's, the rest of the departments do hand time cards. A lot of people that are stipend versus elected versus salary don't prove their hours. So, I know that I've been questioned on is there proof of someone working the minimum hours to qualify for health insurance and for retirement? Not sure if when they were elected, it was in their package or how it was worded. Just think that we need to have some consistency on proof that people are working their minimum hours so that if someone says they're not, they themselves feel they have it recorded that they are.
I think state statute indicates that we as an employer have to maintain records of actual hours worked, I think is how it's worded. Okay. Thank you.
Over time, we've talked about a few times. Policy says one thing, we continue to do another. Someone needs to determine if we're changing the policy or if we're going to enforce the policy. I've been told that the policy was incorrect with the way we calculate overtime with using personal time off and earn time. Think that's something you guys need to address because it's, how we're doing it is how it's always been done, but it doesn't match your policy.
You lost me. So, what is the policy state?
It's not being followed at this time is what she's saying.
Right. What's the policy state?
The policy says you have to work 40 hours to get overtime, that you cannot use personal time off to calculate overtime.
And what you're saying is that we're calculating overtime based on...
Potentially using a vacation day or holiday or sick time.
Instead of actual hours worked. Okay. Thank you.
But you do have, a few people that do have contracts that need to be looked at because if you have a contracted employee, that could say something specifically different.
Okay.
Purchase orders, I think we've talked about a little bit for the most part in the office. It's pretty good about when staff is out in their certain departments ordering and getting things. Might be helpful if we had a little bit more strict of a purchase order that actually came back to your office staff that said, hey, I requested this, so when the bill comes in, there's no second guessing of, hey, by the way, there was another charge that, oops, wasn't mine.
We don't have a standard purchase order for the town, a standard form.
It's not where things purchased. Just like go out, buy it and who does accounts payable?
I pay the bills.
Right. So, like if I went out and bought something, do I just hand you the receipt?
Yeah. But I usually know if it's been, what's been purchased or Michael will know.
Comes to me, I put my big W on it. I look at the account numbers coming out of it, make sure there's money in there.
So, there's no, like to Harry's point, there's no...
No.
Pre-approval form where you have to specify what, why, and what expense account or what you're charging it off to?
No, not unless it's, it falls to the approval board and then it's done.
We have purchasing limits. We used them in the past and it didn't work out because in emergency situations, if you had to do a purchase order, I'm just going to use as an example to get a quart of oil for a piece of equipment. I need oil. It just, we're a small town.
Right.
Maybe it's more a purchase order on your bank.
Joel, by something else.
Well, every week when I do our bills, um, I code them, you know, the line that they go on. So, um, you know, there's only five of us, so usually everybody signs if they buy something. Usually they don't unless I know about it anyhow. So everything's pretty much checked by me, goes to Michael, it's checked by Michael, it goes to Linda. If something is out of sorts, we always catch it. And, you know, purchase orders don't work very well.
So are you s...
I have a question.
Are you signing the, whoever purchased it, signing the receipt and then stating what it was for?
Yeah.
On the receipt? That way...
Yeah, we know anyhow. I send them to Tractor's Fly to get grass seed, per se.
Yep.
Their name's usually on the slip because they tell them who it's for, but, you know...
The employees are very good, the staff is very good at, um, making sure their receipts are in order. There's, it's very seldom that, you know, I'm missing a gas receipt or, or we're checking to see who bought something at Staples that looked out of the ordinary. They're good.
In terms of responsibility of their, for taking out of the correct line, and there's only been a handful of times I've had to call somebody up and say, "Hey, I think you got the wrong line on here," and correct it. Just a handful, so.
I know enough to correct it even because I know it's been mischarged.
I have a question in regards to, uh, you said at a certain dollar amount, it has to come before the board. I was just wondering what that dollar amount is.
Two thousand dollars.
Three?
Three, oh, it's a three. I gotta look at the policy.
So, did we not have an adjustment a couple of weeks ago because Joel something was accidentally put in your fund?
Put in your fund?
For two thousand dollars.
Oh, that was the, that was the, uh, engineering study. And I, before we did it, I spoke to Joel, because his road, said, "Do you have enough money, A, and can we take it out of that fund, B?" And he said, "Yes." And then Ellen came to me subsequently and said that we can't take it out of that. And then made a budget adjustment. She explained to me that, you know, okay, I didn't know that, and we took it out of that, and she made the correction, so.
When did anybody approve an engineering study? I don't remember that.
Approved.
When did the board approve an engineering study?
Board, because it's for the, uh, for the park, and we've got to have one for town hall.
So was it for the park or for the town hall?
Both.
Crystal, can we keep going?
Okay. Um, um, the only other thing I have is in speaking with past board members that were part of the wastewater, the assumption was is once it was up and running, it would be self-sufficient. Um, seems to be that there needs to be an employee almost every Saturday and Sunday for labs. So we're getting overtime pretty much every week. Not sure if they're truly an issue. I haven't had a chance to speak to them.
That's contractual.
Or that's just contractual. So is that something, you know, potentially we need to look at? Staffing needs to be on the weekend.
I've done, I've done a spreadsheet of overtime tracking.
That's really all I have at the moment, unless anybody else has any questions.
You've given us a lot of information in itself, a lot of good stuff.
Employees of the treatment plant have to come in every weekend to do lab work. That's why it's in their contracts.
Do they all have contracts?
Assistant and the, the chief operator and the assistant do.
Is it safe to say that the vast majority of the overtime for the wastewater treatment facility was actually budgeted for and was, was foreseen? Um, there's very little of it that occurs because of an incident or those sorts of things.
Emergency.
Emergency, some, there are some.
We have pump failures.
Right, so there are instances that are going to cause that kind of overtime, but...
She lets me know about that.
So if we looked at the possibility of adding up all the overtime charges and determining if an add to staff is necessary or an increase in a part-time position?
I'd be pleased to show you the spreadsheets that I've done. You can look at those. And I, I, I don't see the need for another, another staff member.
What about staggering of hours worked during the week to accommodate the weekend?
Well, that's, that's, um, well, that's another discussion.
I mean, I guess my question is, in the contracts, in the employment contracts, does it, does it specify you'll work theoretically Monday through Friday and overtime on Saturdays? Or does it specify that you'll get paid a salary to work the weekends?
I'm sorry, what?
This is waste order discussion. We should probably have it as a wastewater meeting. I'm just wanting, just, this is discussion to have as a wastewater.
The road we're at, all twenty-four seven.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It'd be interesting to see how much was, um, how much is allocated, right, not just allocated because the allocation is going to include emergencies, right? It's going to be some forecast of emergencies, but how much of it is just normal, regular, contractual versus how much, how much comes in at an emergency.
But to Ellen's point, we need to take this offline.
And I think that's correct.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Ellen.
Thank you.
Do you have any recommendations, Crystal, regarding the time cards? Should we, like, look at installing time clocks in all facilities for consistency?
It's not, it's, it just doesn't seem fair that you make one department punch clocks and other ones don't, I mean, which I believe we're all honest people and we handwrite our time cards, but...
Okay.
And it all depends on if you want a hand card with detail of what someone's doing versus they've just punched a clock, they come in and they went out.
And then coming back around to moving money from account to account for budget adjustments, um, when the external auditor is in to do the July audit, can you touch base with them and ask them specifically to provide the board with language regarding whether that is appropriate or not, and whether or not it should be done? It's my, I'm a big stickler for compliance, and I really truly feel that when, when the town votes on a budget and there's ten thousand dollars allocated to fix the dump truck, and Joel has to spend fifteen thousand to fix his dump truck, it doesn't matter if it's five thousand dollars over. He's got a justifiable variance, and the taxpayer should know it costs us fifteen thousand dollars to fix the dump truck. Not, it costs fifteen thousand dollars to fix the dump truck, but we got to find it somehow. I just, I don't know, I'm a stickler for, this is what was voted on, this is the actual, I'm sorry, this is what was voted on, the next line item is, this is the actual, and we should see where we're in the red and where we're in the black. It, it, it should come out at the end of the day as a wash, that our total dollar amount should equal. But to me, that's proper accounting practices.
I believe Ellen wanted to say something to that.
And, and you're correct on that one, but we do show in the town report that we make an adjusted budget. We started that this past year. So when you read your town report, it shows actual voted, and then it shows the adjustments made, and then it shows your expenditures, et cetera. So if you look at your town report for FY seventeen, it's going to show you all your variances.
And to reiterate, make sure everybody heard that, it's the, the town report shows the original budget. It shows all of the adjustments that we've agreed to, and then the final expenditure. So anyone who was looking at it could see, could see that. So I, I'm just, I mean, I think we just need to ask the auditor what we should be doing and do what these say.
I did.
I did.
Yep.
Mike, did you have something?
I do, Mike Gardner, I have a question on that. Ellen, Bob, whoever wants to answer it, because, you know, I don't have the town report out in front of me right now. So when you make the adjustment, when you have an over, you, you, we, we budgeted three million dollars for Joel for the roads. Just, I don't mean to keep throwing down to the bus or Joel, but you're here. And you spent three million, and, and three million, ten thousand dollars.
No, no, that's a different thing. That's overspending the whole budget.
So, okay, so we spent, so in his budget, or in someone's budget, there was a fifty thousand dollar line item for maintenance, and we spent fifty thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars. The five, does it show where the five hundred and forty-seven dollars came from, what account it came from?
Yes, because it's going to be under the budget adjustment.
It shows, it don't tell us that...
But it's going to show that one went down and one went up, yes.
But does it explain to the taxpayer where the five hundred and forty-seven dollars came from?
They can ask me. And we budget.
So it's not, it's not in the town report?
It is in the town report.
It's not explained in the town report.
It still comes out, it comes out of a line and makes an adjustment.
But it's not explained where it comes from in the town report.
Right, I understand what you're saying, saying, but it does show it.
All right, we're, we're drifting off.
Right, I'm just curious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions for Crystal?
As it really does, it's only eight.
So before we move on, I think now when we need to do a lot.
Did you want us to discuss this?
That's something I am supposed to supply.
Okay.
So you, and you guys, I'm supposed to have it before June thirtieth.
Okay, well, then, uh, bring it up now. All right, so Ellen provided a municipal checklist for internal control, Part One, cash controls. Uh, it's a series of questions, yes or no, don't know, and then explanations. Uh, the board has to vote on it and agree, and then me as the chairman will sign. Uh, I will pass it around, let our policies control expert look it over first.
We have to do this, like, tonight?
Uh, she's supposed to provide it by June thirtieth, she said.
No, I'm supposed to provide it to you guys by June thirtieth.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you meant we have to have it done by June thirtieth.
Okay, so we don't have to do it like right?
All right, I apologize.
You guys can absolutely take your time and read that over. That's just something that I'm supposed to do.
I apologize, I misunderstood you.
Okay.
Do we have that in electronic format so we can?
I think, I think we're going to need to leave it here.
Yeah, they can leave the, leave the town hall.
Yeah, and then we just have to pop in and look at it. Um...
Yeah.
I'd like to make a recommendation, and Crystal, chime in if you think this is a good idea. Um, in speaking with some other towns, they have their warrants signed weekly, and we do ours when we have meetings. But that means that any adjustments or any concerns that come up from a prior week would cause a headache for payroll and, and pulling things back from staff members or bills or whatever. So, um, a recommendation was made that we each take a week, and we come in after the auditors look at the warrants, and then we, that person authorizes them so that, so that at least somebody is, is authorizing it.
One of us has signed them.
Correct, correct. And we can figure that out amongst ourselves, but we just need to coordinate with the auditors to let them know who's coming in that week so that if they have any information to pass off, we'll, they'll know who to, who should be coming in to sign the warrant.
Linda has something.
Yes.
Board has previously authorized either the chair or the vice chair weekly to come and sign off on warrants.
Right, that's what we've been doing.
That's what we've been doing.
I mean, and if either one of them are available, they can appoint someone. I believe it's Al's bird.
I try to get in, but there's some weeks I'm unable to get in.
You just send out a message.
Message your chair.
But I'd like to make a motion that we all get deputized and that we all have the authority to do that?
It has been.
On the chair and the vice chair's request.
I think that's just how it is already.
I thought, I, I thought we had already discussed that because remember we would initially, initially we had talked about Michael signing off on, on pay and stuff, and then we realized that he, that, yeah, that sort of thing. So I thought that was the same discussion.
Right.
I think it was.
Okay.
We just got to get that out and make sure we do it.
So if either of you can't get in, please let the rest of us know.
Yep.
Yep.
That work?
All right. So any more on the auditor's report?
Yes. Need to make the motion, I believe, to take and do a line item to a fund for...
Town clerk.
Excuse me?
Town clerk.
Town clerk fund.
We're going to have to...
For the...
I think we'll put in the law or something, so it's labeled.
Yeah, put the statute or the law.
I just need approval to put that in.
I, I wouldn't, I would not like to, I would like to table this until the next meeting. It doesn't go into effect until July first.
Right, our meeting is going to be after July first, that's why I'm doing.
Well, okay, we're going into executive session. I'd like to discuss it in executive session first.
Table the budget, that's fine. Just, I just know that we need to have it done before July first.
I understand that.
Okay.
You made the same error I made at the wastewater treatment, so.
All right, well, there any more discussion on that?
When's the signing of the four policies? Just, I'm just trying to keep track of where you are here.
The policies were sent out earlier, but you guys, I guess, were experiencing some technical email difficulties, so...
The policies are here.
Oh, you got them. Oh, okay.
Okay, I think she means the order of the agenda. We did the hard stop for hearing Crystal's report when it left off with discussion and selection of town office.
I just didn't want you to forget it.
Yep, no, thank you.
Yes.
All right, so we're going to go back up to discussion and selection of town office proposals, if that's okay with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, is there any, is everybody ready to make motions, make a decision?
I would recommend that we do something similar to what we did before, and I would say that, at this point, because, because our discussion before, I want to just remind everybody, we sort of had a, a straw poll kind of, but we did that before discussing the variance in the sizes, and before we discussed about, you know, going down and visiting the schoolhouse and things like that. So, in my mind, in my mind, all fiber on the table, I think, I think we should be comfortable with, with going forward with it, we probably, with going forward to making a recommendation. What I'd like to propose is that we each put our top three in sequence. This is my number one, this is my number two, this is my number three, and that way, uh, if your number one doesn't make it, at least you've got some input onto the number two or the number three. Add up the scores and the lowest score wins.
Okay.
Right?
I'm okay with that.
That's one of them, but I think we also do need to discuss it a little bit as well. I think the discussion is...
You mean discuss it as we would have let down or before we even do that?
Well, even, I mean, we should all be able to make a pitch or, or talk about, talk about whatever.
We did that when we met with everybody. I'm fine. I don't need to discuss it anymore.
Well, then I would like to make a comment anyway. I know which one I'm, I'm voting for.
Okay.
And I do want to make the, the comment that we're, we need to be thinking about multiple things here. It's not, it is not just about if you've got multiple proposals and, and some of them are close, you also have to assess which one has the more likelihood of passage by the voters. And if one has a high likelihood of passage and another one doesn't have a high likelihood, even if we like it better, that's the kind of assessment we have to make. We want this to be successful this time. And, and, uh, in my view, there's, one of these proposals has the highest probability of success at the ballot box, and the others don't. We've, we've missed, we've missed the mark a couple of times at the ballot box on trying to move forward with this. So we need to really think about, think about how, how are the voters going to react in November to, or when, or a special election, whatever we decide to do, uh, when it's in front of them. Because we, we could be shooting ourselves in the foot to, well, just, that's my pitch.
It's completely understandable.
And I did want to ask if everybody had the opportunity to go down. I mean, I went down.
I didn't have, I didn't all of this.
Well, me, you, and Marlena, we went down.
And just going down and looking at it, the schoolhouse was in a lot better condition than we thought it was. Um, there was a video out there from, on YouTube available also to talk about the individual who was going to move it and, and how he's moved these buildings in the past. I know that, that was some of the primary concerns about that particular building was moving, and I think that video addresses a lot of those concerns. Um, that's my pitch.
I almost think we should narrow, we should each pick two because we picked three before to move forward, and it's just, we just keep doing this.
Do you have a post-it note pad over there we can steal?
Do I send the void smoke? They can acquire.
I mean, if you want to, but there's no smoking on town premises. All right, so, put your first and second choice on, and we'll pass them down to Linda and let Linda do the tally, and we'll go from there. Pass that down from?
They're all sticking together, guys.
We can't make this easier, stand notes. Well, we can't make this easier, Stan, though.
Whoop-a-ma. Yeah.
We need selecting.
Um, not necessarily. Long time. It wasn't a castle.
Yeah, I thought it was, but it wasn't on the agenda. In the job description, uh, because of that, we can't pick one right now.
I'm not saying that. We should at least provide an opportunity to pick.
True.
Well, we could, but, I mean, the people are still able to apply up, up until Sunday.
That's true. But then they can come back to another meeting and present their suggestions. It's kind of.
You wanna finish, finish this or put a hold on this?
Sorry to report there's a tie.
What's the tie between? Wait, how can there be a tie?
Well, hang on.
Well, we had five.
How, are you just mark, are you marking both one and two as a?
Something to move forward.
Oh, I was, I thought I was just.
No, it should be, what it should be is something like, if I went with.
I'll read them off.
If I went with A, okay.
How's that? How's that? Number one, Messina. Messina Gantlow.
Okay.
Second choice, Murray.
Was Murray.
Can't forget that. I, I don't know who that was.
Murray, Murray. I think somebody might have meant Dewey.
Oh, Dewey?
Oh, Dewey. There you go.
Okay. I was like, wow, where'd that come from? Okay, number one, Gantlow Messina. Number two, Kravitz. Number one, Kravitz. Number two, Line Sync. Number one, Kravitz. Number two, Line Sync. Number one, Messina. Gantlow. Number two, Line Sync.
My method isn't gonna work.
Three lines, three for Gunlow.
So, there's three ones for Gunlow and three for Line Sync.
She'd be here too.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So, why don't you just go for those two?
Right.
And each one gets one vote, and you break the tie.
We had. No, see, I was going for the lowest number. And the lowest number is the ones that never got any votes. So, that's, that was the flaw in my plan, right? So, that was the flaw in the plan. Round two.
Yep, so now between the two.
So, your choices are?
Line Sync.
Wait a minute, you had three ones.
Well, wait, 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 that's not true. We had three ones for Gunlow Messina.
Correct.
And then we had two ones for Kravitz.
And a, and a two.
And a two for Kravitz.
A secondary choice.
And then we had two twos for Line Sync and one two for Dewey. That means it's, 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 that's not a tie.
That sounds like it's Gunlow.
That's Gunlow Messina.
That's what that's telling me.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right.
I thought it was three for Kravitz.
There are, but one was a second choice.
And the other two were.
So, that's, there was, there was three votes there, but there was a second choice. But if you go by a primary.
So, we had three number ones for Gunlow Messina. We had two number ones for Kravitz and a number two for Kravitz.
Right.
And, and the other ones were no number ones, therefore there were two's.
Correct.
And a less, and fewer votes. So, that makes it Gunlow Messina.
Yeah, that takes it. Okay.
All right, then, if there's no, I'll hear, if there's no further discussion, then I will hear a motion.
Not exactly sure how to word the motion, but I, motion that we move forward with the Gunlow Messina proposal.
For the town hall.
For the town hall.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second, yeah.
All right, there's a motion on the table to approve Gunlow Messina for the town hall proposal. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Did that just really happen? We made a big decision.
That was a huge decision.
I would like to have made that decision last week, or two weeks ago. But we've made it, so yay us for doing something. Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, um, we seem to have overlooked something. In our packets, there was interest in the zoning administrator position, and it looks like two individuals showed up this evening to speak to the board. Although the position is still open, should we allow the two individuals to speak? Yes?
Respectfully, I haven't interviewed anyone yet. And date's July second. Rapportations.
Right.
I thought this was an appointment by the board, much like all the other appointments, where an individual just submits.
Well, it is. I'm gonna make a recommendation. I mean, you, you, obviously you're free to do what you wish, but.
Yeah, I agree with Michael. If we, if we put something out there that said, it's open until the second, it's open until the second.
So, I'm just wondering if somebody can explain to me the difference between this and when we had all the other appointees show up.
I'll be happy to explain that.
Yes, please, thank you.
The zoning administrator is chosen, yes, by the board of selectmen, but under the recommendation of the planning commission.
Okay.
So, you should be waiting until technically to your July first deadline, and let your applicant be reviewed by the planning commission and have them forward a recommendation for appointment.
So, that would be Mr. Slattery?
And his board.
And his board. Thank you.
So, we'll have to wait until after they have their next meeting after the posting closes.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Michael.
I was just curious, and, and, you know, job descriptions that you guys had.
Yeah, because it was posted without a.
It's actually, it's actually some recommendations. So, it's not a job description, it's, it's some recommendations from multiple, multiple job descriptions.
That's what I was more interested in.
So, there really isn't one yet.
That's fine. That's totally fine.
It's more guidelines.
Yeah.
That's fine. You need, you need those anyway.
Yep. Sure, once Michael narrows it down to what it should be, we'll, we'll let you know. Or it'll be online to look at.
Okay.
Okay, so is that understood? The select board appoints upon recommendation of the planning commission?
From the planning commission, yes.
Yes, I understand. Okay, so, we did the auditor's report already, so on to personal policy adoptions.
Yep.
When are you gonna sign those policies?
I keep wanting you to make sure you're gonna sign those policies.
Sign them down, we're doing that.
Are they, are they?
Yeah, they're all in here, the ones that.
Oh, just this one?
The whole whole bunch, yes.
Just this one, just this one.
I don't know if you remember this or not, but you did make a couple of recommendations before leaving, and we added them to the upper half of policies and the upper half of policies.
Yes.
And you said with those.
These are what you emailed this morning.
You gave a green light with those changes. I don't know if you remember that. You can, feel free to look at that.
I can do. A lot of it was, a lot of it was making sure that it was BL, that it was verbatim and standard from BL to CT, and you assured us that you, it was pretty much covered.
BLCT doesn't have.
I'm sorry, not BLCT, Vermont State statutes.
Right, I pulled a lot of language from Vermont State labor statutes.
Right, okay, so.
So, do we need a motion? Can we sign because we've already approved them?
I think you've already approved them, so you just, I'm putting it down, they were approved, or approved policies for signature.
Okay. And just an FYI, because we also mentioned it, those two policies are almost verbatim what Michael had in the original personnel policy. I only added the state law references under the state guidelines.
Okay, the, just a, a comment on the personnel policy, I thought we had changed the thirty-six hours a week to twenty-eight hours a week, which is what it was in the previous policy. And the only thing we were moving was the date. This still says thirty-six hours.
Right.
That's for full-time employees.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong section. All right.
Bob, are you okay today?
I was gonna say, you're a little off your game today, Bob.
Yeah. But I shoot with this hand.
It's the same policy.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm good, I'm good.
And keep moving, right? Mm-hmm, yep. Well, after we sign them, we're going to adjourn into executive session.
Yep.
We can probably sign and adjourn at this point. We don't, we can combine things, just pass, all we're doing is passing things around that we agreed to.
I'd like to make in a, a motion to adjourn the meeting, Chairman.
No, not adjourning, we're entering into executive.
Entering into executive session for personnel. I'll second that.
We have a motion to enter into executive session for personnel. All, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you.